We'd like to call the meeting to order. There is a quorum. Trustee Lovejoy Rose not here yet, or Trustee Newman? I'm sure they'll be here. Pledge of Allegiance, if you are able to stand for a moment. Pledge of Allegiance is in a moment in a silent prayer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will remain standing for a moment in silence. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support Peterson.
Motion Aldridge, support Peterson.
Just want to make a note. Just make a note that the public hearing for the special assessment rule will happen at 7:00 PM. So whatever point in time we're in the meeting, at 7:00 we'll stop for that public hearing.
So noted. We have a motion support, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four is the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved Peterson.
Motion Peterson.
Support.
Support Aldridge. Questions or comments? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Are there any general legal updates, Mr. Winters?
Madam Chair, I was going to give a brief update in regards to where we stand in regards to the passage of the township resolution at the last board meeting where we had requested of U of M and ACM to go back to their negotiating tables and make a more concerted effort to reach a resolution or agreement so as to allow the two computational centers and AI research centers that they have proposed for the Bridge Road textile location to go to the ACM property, excuse me, which was identified by them as being the better location. I am pretty, pretty kind of frustrated with the fact that subsequent to the, thank you, subsequent to the August 19th board meeting, I wrote three separate letters to Chris Kolb and Ruben Sakkar, he's the CEO of ACM, three separate requests asking that the environmental consultant Grant Trigger and myself be allowed to participate in those negotiations. Grant Trigger, as the board is aware, was the former environmental attorney for all the racer trust properties, which is for all the General Motors properties that were part of the bankruptcy proceeding. Those properties were remediated from an environmental standpoint. The one property, Ipsley Township, General Motors Hydrametic, became the home of ACM as a result of the sale from racer to Red who in turn leased that to ACM. There has been absolutely no positive response at all from ACM. There's been a response from U of M, Vice President Kolb, there was anything but a positive response. And as we sit here this evening, we are no further, we are no closer to getting a quote "seat at the table" than we were back on August 19th. And it's been said by many people that if you do not have a seat at the table, then you're probably on the menu. And that's exactly how I feel right now, that the township as the host community, first of all, should not have to go to this length to request to be part of negotiations that are going, is going to determine the future land use of this township in a very different way. I think it's been pointed out before by all of you that the township is after all the host community. And our future is inextricably linked to the redevelopment of the 300 acre General Motors property. Everyone seems to forget, but the township board, that when General Motors closed, as a part of the bankruptcy proceeding, the township suffered a 35% loss in our taxable value, which we have yet to recover even today. We're getting closer, but we're not there yet. At the same time, we had a record number of foreclosures that followed suit. And so against that backdrop, I find it very appalling that when one of the wealthiest universities in the country, not the world, wants to come into the township, picks, want to locate on one of the most fragile environmental sensitive areas in the township, and when requested to go back to negotiations, to the location that we were not even made aware of. Had we been made aware of that, I think we could have participated in a meaningful way because we have the history, we have the knowledge, we have the agreements. Grant Trigger knows all about the environmental conditions, as well as the protection for environmental liability for a prospective purchaser or less seen. In addition, right now, I did have a conversation that was made possible yesterday by State Representative Jimmy Wilson, who, just so you know, has been the one public official that has been accessible and has been very, very helpful in trying to push this issue forward in regards to why the township should not be involved in this, in these so-called negotiations. MEDC, as many of you are aware, all of you are aware, is a so-called Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and they are the ones who actually dole out millions of dollars to those who wish to invest heavily in Michigan and hopefully create economic prosperity and jobs. In this case, none of us understand as to how University of Michigan was able to go to the MEDC board on December 9th of last year and ask for $100 million, which they were granted, to proceed with the preparation of the two computational centers on the 20 acre parcel located at Bridge Road textile. Of course, six months later, the 20 acres morphed into another 124, but nobody bothered to tell MEDC back in December that that was their plan. In discussing this yesterday with MEDC, I reconfirmed that we do have a meeting scheduled with them and the township's full-time officials this coming Friday. And I've also made it very clear from our standpoint that right now, that we're really at a crossroads here. There is no reason why the township continues to have to beg to be at these negotiations that will have a direct impact on our future, especially given the fact that in a conference call that was participated in with Supervisor Assumbo and Clerk Swanson with DTE, it was absolutely 1,000% crystal clear that they are not looking anywhere except Bridge Road and Textile Road to build a substation to accommodate these computational centers. In fact, when the question was asked, they said that basically they had done, they looked at something in the past, but they were focused on that location and fed, went so far as to try and encourage the township officials to carry their water bucket by telling our residents that this would be, this would be good in the long term for the rate payers. Needless to say, nobody drank that Kool-Aid, but it's clear from what was being presented right today that I do not believe they are proceeding in a good faith manner, because if they were, why would they deny the foremost expert on the environmental conditions of that property, Grant Trigger, from being involved, myself being involved, who have also expressed their willingness to sign non-disclosure agreements? So the question becomes, what are you hiding? And so in the conversation with MEDC, I did indicate to them that these are very, very bad optics to have the wealthiest, one of the wealthiest universities in the country with their handout for $100 million, which has been approved, and yet not even show any type of respect for the host community, to have a say-so on what's going to happen, especially given that the ACM property was actually prepared and made ready to accommodate the technological advancements in the future. That's why it's called American Center for Mobility, Autonomous Vehicle, et cetera, et cetera. All these technological advanced industries are going to be located on that property. I find it even more disingenuous, very troubling, that the first meeting that U of M held, had on this issue was held on the north campus in Ann Arbor. Why would you not bring this informational meeting to Ipsley Township where it's more convenient for residents to come to, especially given the challenges you have to even park over, over in Ann Arbor? I can't go without saying right now that I've done my own AI research right now in regards to right now, as of May of this year, there's approximately up to 700,000 Michigan residents who stand to lose their Medicaid benefits as a result of drastic cutbacks by the federal government to all the states, including Michigan, obviously. And that there's going to be a tremendous shortfall in regards to somehow trying to fill that gap, as well as the fact that there's going to be a cutback on SNAP or nutrition benefits. So this is going on simultaneously while the University of Michigan continues to basically say, we'll take the 100 million, but it's a top secret as to where we're going to go, and we don't want, trust the township to be involved. I am also reminded by, I think there was a quote years ago by the late Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, that if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. And so it may very well be the time to bring a folding chair. The problem is, I don't know where they're meeting. I don't know what time they're meeting. Otherwise, I'd bring a couple folding chairs and just show up. But it's hard to show up when someone doesn't even give you the courtesy of responding to letters. And I can't help but also point out, in that last letter I sent to Chris Kolb, I think it's important to take a moment right now to reflect upon some of the things that have been discussed here, because we have a tendency sometimes to have a lot of letters that are written, but sometimes don't get a chance to really digest some of the, some of the facts. Ipsley Township, Washtenaw County, there's no secret anybody here, continues to be divided by race and place. And as pointed out to Chris Kolb right now, that dividing line is pretty much Carpenter Road. And Ipsley Township, it's been well documented that the life expectancy of minorities who reside in eastern Washtenaw County is anywhere from 17 years or greater than those who live west of Carpenter Road. Those in eastern Washtenaw County have fewer options to receive health care, have disparate educational opportunities, and earn less money. The list goes on and on and on. And so in those letters, I've also pointed out that they were written at that time just prior to the anniversary date of 9/11, when this country had the worst domestic terrorist event resulting in lots of lives greater than the attack on Pearl Harbor, and great hundreds of police officers and firefighters sacrificed their lives, the first responders, in rushing into the Twin Towers. It's against that backdrop where you still refuse to contribute one dime, $1 towards police and fire services, even though if something does happen in any of those locations, the township has a legal obligation to respond to. The frustration has to come to an end, and maybe will come to a head this coming Friday morning. I did advise the MEDC representatives that at this point in time, township is seriously considering, I think the board is still considering, to request a clawback of their $100 million. Quite frankly, it's even offensive to begin with that you would ask for $100 million in this economic climate, when you have 700,000 Michigan residents that are going to lose Medicaid benefits. And to have a wealthy university take that money while not even giving one dime back to the host community on top of that, I don't know how much worse this can go in terms of how they are treating Ipsley Township. I don't mean to sound like that somehow they, we should get special treatment, but at a minimum, we deserve better than what we've received to date. So I'm going to continue to try and do everything possible to fulfill the township board's resolution mandate, but at the same time, I think the township also needs to, the township board also needs to become as aggressive, even more so, because I know that Representative Wilson has made it quite clear that he stands ready to introduce the legislation to clawback the dollars, but at the same time, we want to have a conversation. We want to sit down and make our case. There isn't any obstacle out there from a legal, environmental standpoint that cannot be overcome if we are allowed to participate. And this agreement back in 2016, Stan, you were on the board, Karen, you were on the board, obviously Brenda was, and I mean Debbie, I mean this agreement was put into place to make this a reality on the GM property and to try and give back to this community what it lost when we suffered that devastating closure due to General Motors' financial failures to operate. And at this point in time, I've written the letter to all of you, I've written it to Chris Kolb, ACM, I've sent the letters to the president, interim president of U of M, Governor Whitmer's office, Congresswoman Dingell. She too has been quoted in the papers saying that U of M has not been transparent and should meet with the local township officials, but they're not doing that. They're not going to do it unless there is, continues to be significant pressure placed on them to do that. And at this point in time, we continue to, I've written four letters demanding that in a very short period of time. And I know that ACM president is all over the country on vacation right now for a while, okay? Everybody gets a vacation, I understand that. But as I told you, MEDC, put us in, coach. No, we can, we can do this, but you got to bring us to the table. And if at this point in time, maybe the township board has to also make a stronger voices, because I knew you've done anything you possibly can, you've done the resolution, you've spoken out publicly. I don't know what it will take to get the attention of the governor's office involved here. And the irony is, I told you, MEDC, is that the township board did not say, you know, you're not welcome to come to Ipsley Township to do these computational centers and AI research centers. We understand the importance as to what we've been told that they're going to achieve, but we're saying, go to a different location that's better suited. And what part of that they do not understand, I do not know, but I will say this, I'll be quiet. If you spent 18 months negotiating for a location, and you weren't able to succeed in finding common ground, and if you did this in a secrecy or cloud of secrecy that nobody knew about, including Congresswoman Dingell, nobody knew about it, and you're hiding under these non-disclosure agreements, don't criticize this township board and myself when we doubt your transparency, or your motives, or what you're really doing is going through the motions of what it appears you're taking our request, but you're not really being sincere in your efforts to do so. Because if you were, what could possibly be the downside to have Grant Trigger and myself participate in those discussions? It's not going to cost U of M a dime. Township board is paying for those services. So what possible reason would you have to say no unless you really have a motivation not to succeed? And if I'm wrong, then prove me wrong and let us participate. But this is getting to a point right now, this is already now going into the fall months. We've been dealing with this since, I guess, June, when we first found out of their intent to acquire the 124 acres. Again, as I pointed out in some of the maps and diagrams and other letters, you know, those two pieces of property, the total of 144, is separated by the access road that leads into South Hydro Park. It's not been developed yet, it's a natural state, and at some point in time, it could become more of a passive recreational, right? We're sandwiched right in between those centers, and our property goes into the Heron River, just like theirs does. But at the same time, they would not think twice of putting a computational center next to Mathi Gardens over there, which is, which is a property which they too own and could easily locate if they so desired. So I'll stop right now because that is, it's all contained in my previous letters, but I wanted to at least make you aware that we did speak, I did speak with the MEDC representative yesterday, and who knows a lot about the ACM properties, is very much aware of our request, and seemingly is of like mind that they should be involved in this too. You've got to keep in mind that ACM still owes the state of Michigan $35 million. They owe $35 million. So how can you sit there and dictate to anybody who should or should not be involved in negotiations that can do nothing but help you get out of this $35 million deficit that you have because of the way that the property has not developed as you initially envisioned? But now that was then, this is now. But so come Friday morning, anything less than allowing us to participate is just not acceptable, and I don't know what the next step is, do we go to the Board of Regents? Do we go to the governor's office? We got to do something, and I think it's Lansing is where it has to take place, because they seem to have the power, and they seem to have the control and the oversight. But I just don't like the idea that if we go away, be quiet, this will all fade away. That's not who we are, that's not what we've ever done. We can accept, you know, an answer, we can accept, you know, someone saying no to us, but I will not ever accept just the silence and the rudeness that goes along with a legitimate request. As a host community, we have a right to be involved in how this future, this township is going to look. You put that substation over there in the corner of Bridge Road, you can put all the screening you want, it's not going to hide that substation, that's going to be probably, I don't know, 110 to 200 megawatts, whatever, they don't even know themselves how large it's going to be. And why do you need 144 acres when you start out with 20, and we've already known that they've given 20 acres, that changed, now it's 144 acres? Is there more computational data centers that are being planned for that we don't know of right now? You've certainly got the room, you know, to add to more, add more, add more to that location, and right now, your track record of transparency and being forthright with this community does not exist. And so why would you need 144 acres for two computational centers? It doesn't make any sense, unless there's a plan that we are simply also being kept in the dark. And I believe we are, but I'll leave it at that, but that's what I've been doing for a couple weeks or a month, whatever time it was since we last met. But I think right now, the next opportunity is to get with our elected leadership in Lansing, and as well as Congresswoman Dingell, and I think we need to have a meeting with the governor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I agree with everything you said, and Clerk Swanson and I, and Larisha, you and Trustee Thornton, and I know one resident is in the audience, we went to that community engagement meeting at U of M, and it was anything but engagement. You walked, and there was a poster board in front of you, and you read it, and one person was in front of it, they had no depth on the knowledge or information, and it, I mean, it was disappointing, but you, we had to go, just to, and it wasn't wildly advertised at all, so a lot of people did not know about it. It was buried within an email for us, that you had to click on it to see that was the second meeting, because there's going to, it's supposed to be another meeting planned in Ipsy Township, but that was just disturbing, that they would think that people could go. And it took us everybody 30 minutes to get to the place, which was not easy. And the amount of people that showed up when we were there, excluding the boards and the people that were there, there couldn't have been 25 or 30 people there. And our residents also vehemently oppose this location. I mean, they, some of them oppose data centers altogether, or computation centers, that's a whole nother issue. This, our township ordinance was zoned, is zoned for data centers. So even if it was a private entity that wanted to go there, I just want to, it is zoned for it, we're changing our zoning in order to, now that we realize that it's a much more heavier, more like a manufacturing industrial use with the amount of electric, the amount of water, and the amount of sewer. No one had any idea, well, I shouldn't say that, I had no idea what a data center was until we went and visited, and we were able to see the industrial look and feel and needs from a utility standpoint. So I know other communities had rezonings, private companies that would have paid taxes, but it wasn't zoned properly in those communities. One in Celine Township voted it down, Augusta Township, the people petitioned to have it on the ballot, but I don't know what's, what it's going to take. I think that U of M thinks and acts as if they're better than anyone, and it doesn't matter what we say or what we do, it doesn't give our community and our residents the respect that we're deserving of. American Center for Mobility, the University of Michigan was a partner in that. Cynthia Willbanks was the Vice President of Governmental Relations, and she brought us in in the beginning as a township host community. And we can't even get in when we're fighting to get in, and it's just a totally different approach than the American Center for Mobility. And I do thank Debbie Dingell for her strong words on that, because research and development with U of M and the opportunities that it could provide, you know, for not only us but our country, I think it is important, but being at that location is wrong, it is absolutely wrong to put it there, and we have a solution that's win-win, and I don't know what else we can do, we'll keep pushing, you know, like, that's all we can do, is keep fighting it, and fight for our residents, and fight for our community, and fight for what's right. And the state of Michigan, Representative Jimmy Wilson has helped us with that now, but the state of Michigan gave him a 6% waiver on sales tax. So the investment's a billion dollars, and the legislation gave the private entities a waiver on that $6 billion investment. It just, it makes zero sense to me, the way it was rolled out, and like, everyone's upset, but what can we do about it? It's like Mr. Winters stated, just if we could get at the table, we could help. And they won't let us at the table. ACM is not allowed to talk to me, they were, because they signed a non-disclosure agreement, so I mean, we can't get, but we'll keep pushing, and hopefully MEDC will assist with that, and the governor's office. I did send one email requesting that we have a meeting with someone. I did send one email requesting that we have a meeting with someone from the Governor's Office, but I guess they're busy too. But anyways, we'll keep pushing.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to add that the disappointment is just wide on everybody. I think that there's no reason for us, for the state to not be looking at and incentivizing brownfields. So we're not the only community that has property that was meant to help when Racer Trust helped clean it up, but they're not even looking at that. So the idea that they'd put this intense pressure on incentivizing it, not learning lessons from even other states where things have happened, like there's just no reason for it. If Michigan wants to be a leader and it looks like they would like this to happen, there is no reason for brownfields and other areas not to be looked at and for them to make it so that it goes there. Whether people want them or not is a different question, but if they are coming here, why would you, we've got, you know, farmers, we've got people in other towns that are really clamoring because they're unhappy about it. And really the pressure is coming from above and it's intense. So if the University of Michigan wants to be considered the leaders and the best, this is early on. They have a way to demonstrate how to do this in a way that is going to be good for our community and the way they're doing it right now is not that way. So they need water and sewer. These plants that close, we're not the only community that experienced the impact that Attorney Winters discussed. It's just a, you just don't do it this way. Everybody's operating in isolation and all those things they're doing in isolation are just putting pressures on communities that are not okay. So get out there and do the right thing and at least let us at the table and put somebody at the table who knows. Because not only does Grant Trigger know about our property, he knows about other properties that have been cleaned up because he was on it. He knows that. Put somebody at the table who knows it. If you don't have them there, I agree Attorney Winters, you're just not looking for a solution that's going to come here. And that's not right to treat our community this way. It's just not the way to go.
All right. Well, yes.
I just wanted to add, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to all that went to the meeting and to you Doug and everybody that's working on Brennan's stuff. Thanks for all, because I know it's so frustrating to be, for us to be treated and to be in a leadership position and not to be able literally to do anything that we've never been there before. And it's, and you just, and you look at all and just, and I went and read all the stuff and all, and thanks Doug for getting all the notes and the minutes from U of M, the Board of Regents there, but when you, and the applications, Michigan Strategic Fund. But when you read everything, it's almost, I always, I keep looking, it's like DTE is like, like the superstar and all of it. And I can't help because of the way that it's going on, you know, and of course, it's just our gut and our experience because we, because they don't talk to us, we don't know. But to think that there's something, there's something more behind this and somehow I just keep thinking, it just goes back to DT because it doesn't make, there's no way that you look at this, that this makes any sense, you know? And we're pretty good at seeing why the, you know, that's, that's what we get, you know, that's what we all get paid for and we do. That's your job to figure out ways to negotiate and do things better for your community and for your residents. And so we've become pretty proficient, I think. Some of you that's been around a really long time have known what the opposition and figuring out, okay, they want that and then, or in labor negotiations, you know, figuring out how to get to win-win. They want that, we want this, how do we get there? But when you don't have any conversation or anything with folks and they just throw this out and with all the history we know, and we know that they know some of this, there's no way they don't know. Like ACM was a U of M, it was a community thing. Racer, it was set up under, you know, the president, the president and the federal government to be able to take these old sites and to use monies to clean them up so that they can be redeveloped. U of M, like you said, came to us, so they were a part of it. So it makes all the sense in the world that you would go to a place that was basically designed, maybe not for this specific technology, but was designed to bring economic development and jobs, which is all they're portraying that this is going to be, to, you know, to the community. It's already off the tax rolls, so it makes sense there. There's, U of M knows that. There would be no rub on that because you're going there instead of taking a piece of property that's on the tax rolls, you know, ah. I don't, I know it's going to need upgrades and stuff, but GM, I don't know. It would be interesting to know, especially as, if we could ever have a conversation, is how much power did GM use a day and how much water? And how does this relate to what U of M wants to do? Because in my opinion, if they're just doing those two smaller ones, you, General Motors probably use a lot more power than what maybe those two. I don't know. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a scientist in that area. So the need to build this huge, which they've made a really big deal in this, and you said they said it again, somebody, was it Doug or you Brennan, somebody said that they made this deal about why aren't we jumping on it? Because it's going to be all this promises for, you know, Ypsilanti Township residents, we're going to get, you know, rate, good rates on our, on our energy when they build this new super transfer station. And they, I read that in print somewhere too, and it was a Strategic Fund application and some of the stuff that Doug sent around that he, that he picked up from U of M or some of the, or maybe it's MEDC. But even when you read that, just like y'all reacted, it's like, that's ridiculous. You're going to spend who knows how many multimillion dollars is going to go into building a super duper, you know, transfer station? And then it's supposed to be, oh, but we're only going to need one third of it and we're going to give the rest to y'all for free. What? It's like, no, you know, and then when you look, and when you look at the GM site or the ACM site, the power was, everything's there. I know it's going to need upgraded, but you can't tell me that that's not going to be cheaper. Water and sewer, they use I don't know how many gallons. I know it killed Yucca and still, is it a million gallons a day? Right. And I know, so the infrastructure is there to deliver a million gallons a day. So it's not, so when you look at that and all the things, it just, it makes no sense just to make people angry, to upset everybody. So there's, there's a big piece of this puzzle that's moving this whole thing that we don't have because nothing else makes any sense, you know? And I don't, I don't know what that is. Somehow in my gut, DTE is somehow. I don't know if it's just to get, they're going to get more money, to be able to do something, to get, you know, they can do more and export more because they know that they're going, they need more energy in the area and this is the way to do it, funding and I don't know. Or maybe it's Chris Colb just, but now Doug sent stuff personally to all the regents. So it's not just Chris Colb anymore, right? I keep thinking like, is he just got some like vendetta against us or, you know, it just, there's not, you know, you just keep trying and trying and trying to figure it out. But ACM is a place, I mean, I, you know, everything that you read, they're not good for the, you know, but they're here. They're just, it's kind of like cell phones, you know, or whatever. They're here to stay and that, that site, the site kind of, that was really kind of designed for it really.
Agreed.
Oh, anyways, we'll keep moving forward and we're going to do whatever needs to be done.
All right. Under Old Business, the number one is the approval of the L 4029 2025 tax rates for the 2026 budget.
So moved.
Motion, Lovejoy Rowe.
Support.
Support Eldridge. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under New Business, approved Resolution 2025-25 authorizing the Township of Ypsilanti to sell to purchaser UPH Ypsilanti Property LLC, which is Culver's, 3.74 acres of vacant, vacant acres located at 1410 South Huron Street pursuant to the real estate purchase agreement executed by all parties on May 8, 2024. Clerk Swanson?
Charter Township of Ypsilanti Resolution 2025 authorizing the Charter Township of Ypsilanti to sell purchaser UPH Ypsilanti Property, Ypsilanti Property LLC, 3.740 vacant acres located at 1410 South Huron Street pursuant to the real estate purchase agreement executed by all parties on May 8, 2024. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and Michigan Municipal Corporation, whose administrative offices are located at 7200 South Huron River Drive, Ypsilanti, Michigan 48197, is the owner of vacant property comprising 3.740 acres, which property located at 1410 South Huron Street, Ypsilanti Township, Washtenaw County, State of Michigan. And whereas on May 8, 2024, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and UPH Ypsilanti Property LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company, whose address is 49169 Alpha Drive, Wixom, Michigan 48393, executed a real estate purchase agreement for UPH to purchase 3.740 acres located at 1410 South Huron Street from the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, which legal description of the vacant parcel is described as follows. K-11-38-280-016, 1410 South Huron Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan 48197, with a legal description being attached as Exhibit A to the real estate purchase agreement, which agreement along with Exhibits A, B, and C are hereby attached and incorporated by reference. Whereas at all, whereas at a regular board meeting held on May 7, 2024, the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees authorized and approved the sale of the vacant 3.740 acres to purchaser UPH for the purchase price of $806,513 pursuant to the market valuation report previously prepared by Deputy Assessor Brian McClary. And whereas on the 8th day of May 2024, the realist, the township and UPH executed and signed the real estate purchase agreement in which UPH agreed to remit to the township the sum of $806,513 for the purchase of the 3.740 vacant acres located at 1410 South Huron Street in accordance with the market valuation report. And whereas all contingencies set forth in the real estate purchase agreement have been satisfied and both the township and the UP, and UPH have notified First American Title Insurance Company to prepare all necessary documents to effectuate the real estate closing, which is scheduled for Thursday, September 18, 2025. Now therefore, the Ypsilanti Charter Township Board of Trustees hereby resolves as follows that the township, number one, that the township authorize supervisor Brenda L. Stumbo and clerk Deborah A. Swanson to execute all documents required by First American Title Insurance Company to effectuate the transfer of the vacant 3.740 acres of property to purchaser UPH on the date scheduled for the closing or any subsequent date thereafter. Number two, that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to Patricia A. Cadena, Senior Commercial Escrow Officer for the First American Title Insurance Company pursuant to Article 8, closing of the real estate purchase agreement. So moved.
Support.
Motion, Motion Swanson, support Eldridge. Discussion?
I just, Madam Chair, I just had a question. When is the end date for Culver's scheduled for them to?
Break ground?
Yes. Well, actually, be done, yeah, be done, be open, yeah.
Well, I think they'll be starting right away. I don't know if it'll take four to six months. I'm not really sure. I think they want to, they want to get in the ground pretty quickly here, so.
Okay.
It's a high priority for them.
All right. I've had people ask.
Yeah. So if I, I do, we received an email from Culver's broker, is that the position that?
He's the owner.
He's the owner. Oh, is he? Yeah, they see, they sent a very nice email complimenting our attorney on getting everything in order, in order to execute the sales and the planning department assisted in it. We don't often get letters like that and they were just very complimentary of our attorney's office and how the professionalism and putting all the documents together. So thank you for that, Mr. Winters. This, I agree with Trustee Newman, like lots of people are asking when. So this is, we're much closer than we were in May of last year, right?
Yeah, all right.
So thank you, Mr. Winter. All right, we have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is to waive the financial policy and add an additional device to an already approved courtroom audio project for the newly renovated courthouse in the amount of $7,913.38 funding, which is budgeted.
So moved.
Support Peterson.
Motion Eldridge, support Peterson. Oh, are there any questions? April is here. To answer any questions, I do want to say that this is so, we're getting close. We toured it Monday, was it? You took us, yeah. And it's, it's almost there and.
We're a couple of weeks out.
Yeah. So hopefully a parking lot will be done at the same time and very good job.
We're very excited. We're on budget. I appreciate everyone. Stan has really helped us lead this and we're almost there.
Almost. We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is to waive the financial policy and install security cameras in the new courthouse in the amount of $17,907 funding is budgeted within the court renovation grant.
So moved.
Support.
Go ahead, dear.
Motion Eldridge, support Thornton. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You've done a great job too. I don't know what we would do without you, coordinated on the 14B court side. Did we all vote?
Yes.
Okay. Number four is approved Resolution 2025-26 revised support for 2025 Michigan Department Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund application.
Charter Township of Ypsilanti Resolution 2025-26 revised resolution of support for 2025 MDNR Land and Water Conservation Fund application. Whereas this board is committed to providing quality parkland and trails to its residents and visitors and approve the 2024 Recreation Master Plan. And whereas this board recognizes that the 2024 Recreation Master Plan has identified the resurfacing of the North Bay Park Boardwalk Trail as a priority project. And whereas this board wishes to utilize the MDNR Land and Water Conservation Fund for a matching grant to resurface and improve the North Bay Park Boardwalk Trail for safety improvements. And whereas Resolution 2025-09 was read at the April 1st, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting, which asked for $351,000 match with a total cost of $702,000. And whereas this board acknowledges it has, acknowledged, acknowledges it has received an updated cost estimate in the form of an engineer's probable cost statement and anticipates the resurfacing and improvement of North Bay Park Boardwalk Trail in accordance with the specification and the grant application to be $1 million. And now therefore be it resolved that this board supports the pursuit of the MDNR Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application and will provide the match to the grant if approved in the amount of $500,000, replacing previous Resolution 2025-09. So moved.
Motion Swanson, support Rowe. Was that correct? Okay. Are there questions and comments on this? Hopefully, yeah, we can, there's not been any improvements to it since it was originally put in in 86, 87?
Nice time.
Mid 90s is one of the dates that I have in the grant. But just, just to clarify, John Hines, Municipal Service Director, the addition is after doing a walkthrough with the MDNR, we needed to include more of the pavement trail down to the boardwalk as well as the boardwalk on both the, I'd say the leading section to the, sorry, boardwalk twice. The leading wooden walkway section to the boardwalk itself as well as the boardwalk wooden walkway to the, I'd say west of the existing section. So it's two existing sections that we did not include in the original application as part of the cost estimate. So the MDNR said we had to have that to go for the grant and be awarded the grant. So we talked with Spicer Group and met them on site. They did the updated walkthrough and with a boardwalk that they have constructed in northwestern Michigan, they said with the addition of that, that the township, it's recommended that they apply for the max amount for the grant because, you know, how much supplies are that it's going to cost that amount.
All right. Questions or comments? Clerk Swanson?
So John, I can't remember if we decided if the replacement was going to be in the plastic timbers or if it's going to be wood. Do you know if, what they're planning for in this cost estimate?
Everything right now is wood because it is so much cheaper than Trex plastic and that trail is, as you know, so big that the only chance we have for the funds to be used effectively are going to be with wood. We will have if awarded, so right now the plan would be, you know, if the board approves this resolution tonight, I'm meeting with our grant coordinator Beth on Friday and we're going to re-upload this resolution. we're going to re-upload this resolution as well as some additional supporting documents, including a letter of recommendation from Jimmy Wilson to our applications for both this and the prior approved trust fund grant for the pavilion replacement to get our final awards hopefully sometime next month because the new deadline is October first for supplemental information. So at that point, we would find out if we get the grant, and of course, the board would approve it, and then we would have internal meetings with an engineering firm of the board's approval on the options and what they've seen with other communities. I can say with the cost estimate, wood is the chosen material, but there's also some other things that we might want to consider, and that comes with that walkway down that we're looking to now have to replace and make ADA accessible. Right now, we have asphalt switchbacks into a wooden walkway, then it meets the boardwalk trailhead. And then on the other side, I don't know if you've ever been to North Bay after a, I won't even say a heavy rain, but a decent rain, that part of the boardwalk sinks, so we are required to replace that as well. So we're going to have to have internal meetings on what is the cost if we asphalt the whole thing, cement the whole thing, crush limestone with some drainage underneath, or again, wood where wood is. So there's many cost considerations that will have to be made when it comes to looking at the leadway down there, the trail itself, and the six bridges, which are currently considered in the original grant application, and we might have to put some of those things in that RFP as alternates.
I have a question.
Trustee Newman?
With, with wood, we know the maintenance is every, what, five years or so? I mean, with the maintenance of people walking on it, will it need to be refreshed?
So when we were looking at some of the ARPA projects two years ago, when the board approved those, the conversation came about wood versus Trex, and it's similar to the fiber mulch versus the rubberized mulch, is upfront, rubberized mulch like Trex is more expensive, but the maintenance is much less, but it's harder to fix. You know, if you break one of those decks, you definitely have to replace it. If it pops up, you have to replace it, you can't just screw it back down. So it's over the lifetime, it's much closer than you would realize, but the upfront cost is much more expensive for Trex.
So I think that, that also has to be considered, the long-term maintenance, or not the long-term, but the maintenance costs of all of the options.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yes, Trustee Roe?
I have a question, I know this is kind of a weird question, but have you ever heard of, maybe some of you guys have, like if we were to get the grant and we just couldn't do the Trex?
Can you speak up?
Is that if we were to get the grant, but we didn't have funds for the township to supplement for the Trex, if we had the difference between that, like maybe doing like a fundraiser? Because we all, that is such a heavily and very well-loved parking.
Regional, yeah.
Yeah, like if there was a way to do some kind of like fundraiser, GoFundMe or something to say, hey, we could do this, and we know in ten years it's going to start, it's just like, everybody knows, when you do your deck, you know, even if you stay in it every five years, like ten years, it starts splitting and all, and then, but if you use Trex, it's going to be there for a lifetime. I don't know, it was just an idea. Have you ever heard of anybody?
Heard of them doing it.
Yeah, I think they have.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I think that that's a project that, especially if we make it all ADA, you know, compliant and all that kind of stuff that's coming in, that, that's just a very well-used and loved, I mean, it's beautiful.
Agreed.
It's a good idea.
We've never done.
Down the road, something to think about that we could head up.
So we have a motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is to approve the special event application for Row Fest twenty twenty six to be held on Ford Lake contingent and contract being brought to the board.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Roe, support Peterson.
Good evening, John Hines again, I'm joined by Megan Hughes and Mike Price of Destination Ann Arbor, and we're here to bring forward the Park Commission recommendation of the special event application submitted by Destination Ann Arbor for Row Fest twenty twenty six. So approval of this agenda item tonight would be, again, approving that recommendation of the application and letting the township attorney and staff enter into contract negotiations for twenty twenty six. I did send an email out to the board after the event with some of the recaps, and I know Megan and Mike have more tonight, which is the presentation that they're going to show that I've actually not seen, but, you know, overall, at least from an event side, things went very well. You know, we had to adjust on the fly with the amount of folks that came into the park for the amount that they did, the amount of supplies that we needed, and the amount of staff that we needed, so again, there was a lot that we adjusted to, but they were fantastic partners. U S Rowing was fantastic, and to this day, still have not heard one negative public comment, so again, I'll step away and let them show their presentation, but again, from our standpoint, at least from recreation and residential services and the event side of things, things went fantastically.
Thanks, John, we wanted to keep you on your toes. Megan Hughes, Director of the Sports Commission, thank you for your last year work, working with us on getting Row Fest twenty twenty five. As John said, it was a huge success, and such a success that U S Rowing wants to come back in twenty twenty six.
Thank you, good evening, Michael Price, Executive Vice President, Destination Ann Arbor and Ipsy Reel, and just to reiterate Megan's comment, U S Rowing is pushing us pretty hard for twenty six, they're very excited, love the destination and the community as a whole, and the partnership with the township and the local entities that they did enter with. I'd also note, Megan's going to touch on this as well, twenty twenty six would be the last opportunity we have to host this specific event for quite some number of years with the Olympics coming up and some other events that are ongoing, we wouldn't be able to even consider this event until after twenty twenty nine likely, so as we talk a little bit about what twenty six looks like, we just want to make you aware of that as well.
So we're just going to do a quick twenty twenty five recap to give you some data from the event this year, very quickly. We had two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine participants over a ten-day period. We hosted a Learn to Row event that was locally driven, where we brought people and invited people from the community to come, that's one of the photos there, right there. We gave back seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Washtenaw County nonprofits for their volunteer efforts during the event, and then fifteen thousand dollars overall to other nonprofits that also came to volunteer. We had some great media coverage, there was an Ipsilanti podcast that came out, CBS Morning News came out and did a great article, and live TV coverage right there as well.
Real quick, I want to just add there, sorry, no, you're, just want to add really quick as well, right there, that, want to thank the township overall, but also recognize that U S Rowing wanted us to extend a very special thank you to the township and their partnership. They said this was one of the most responsive, pleasant experiences they've ever had at one of their events. Normally, they get complaints about parking officials and people coming in and the challenge of that. Their participants were ecstatic with how nice we were here, and they were a little confused as to why we were all so nice. I'm like, we're just Michigan, nice people, that's just kind of how we are, but they noted that right away, and while we certainly appreciate the full support of the entire township in this process, I do want to just take a quick second to really thank John and Robin specifically. Robin was an incredible asset onsite and was just a superhero that entire ten days and performed very well. Also want to thank Supervisor Stumbo and Trustee Peterson, they were driving golf carts, they were volunteering, they were out greeting people and doing secret intel, secret shopping opportunities to learn as much as they could about the event, so appreciate seeing you all out there as well, and if others were out there and I missed you, I apologize, but thank you for that as well. And then Attorney Winters as well for working with us and staying diligent with the contract, the insurance, the safety plan, there was a lot behind the scenes, so just really appreciate all your work on that as well.
These are just some photos from the event, the volunteer tent, a team, you can see all the boats there, the Jumbotron, we had people that came that volunteered from Ipsilanti Township and remarked how beautiful it was and how different it looked and how it all came together.
Really quick, yeah, really quick, we'll fly through these numbers, I just, and this is in the packet so you can review it, but just wanted to show the impact that this event had with bringing people in. The first line there in the green is the week of Row Fest, and this is Ford Lake Park that you're seeing up here, Geo Fence Ford Lake Park for placera AI data, and you can kind of see on this data here the spike that the week before Row Fest, four point eight thousand people in the park, the week after, six thousand, that ten days of Row Fest, twenty-six thousand people visited this area. The average time onsite jumped to a hundred and ninety-four minutes that week, and you can see the year-over-years there, but you can take a look at that detail when you have a little more time. And the next slide here is really fun slide as well, this is hourly visits. I know Robin and John are really excited to see this information, you can see the peak times of when the park was most active and when the area was most active, and you can really see kind of picking up around eight thirty-nine o'clock through the middle of the day and then tailing off again in the afternoon and the early evening, and then that bottom one is the visit duration, the green is the week of Row Fest. You can see the average, excuse me, the average time visits there for the visit duration leaping up to over a hundred and fifty there during that week, so you can really see just the impact and the time spent onsite. And then the last final data slide here that we'll show as well is the distance people traveled to be in the park during Row Fest during that week. So you can really see how it was a very large national and regional, national-driven event there, the final couple ones being over a hundred and over two hundred and fifty miles away from the venue where people were coming, and then you see there that three to ten-mile range, we did have a good local range of participation in there as well. We heard from the local businesses in the township, this was one of the best weeks in July that they have ever had, we heard that from a lot of our Ipsy partners with the restaurants and the businesses, and a lot of our Ipsy township folks as well. We are in the midst of finalizing an economic impact study to look at the full scope of impact of this event, that should be wrapped up in the next few weeks, and we'll certainly share that once we have that final detail as well there.
As Mike mentioned, there were many participant comments during the event, but also, this was the first time they've sent a post-event survey, and they actually had positive comments after the event, so we wanted to share these with you. I won't read them over because I know we're short on time, but to reiterate what Mike said, amazing experience for everybody here. And then just to quickly give you some information for twenty twenty six, we would be looking for setup July sixth through the ninth. There's Brenda right there volunteering and her with our team. Practice and racing would be July tenth through the nineteenth, and we would tear down on July twentieth, so the event would look very, very similar, about the same scope of size as this last year. And the course map is from this year, that would also remain very, very similar with maybe a few small tweaks here and there is what it looked like, and any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes.
Can you send that to us?
It should be in the packet, let's put it in.
Oh, is it in here?
Sorry, we, we sent it to, it will be sent after.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That email that I sent with the recap is attached to that.
Oh, okay, I did, I think I just read the email, I didn't go.
I'd also add, we have a video, overhead drone video that we'll share as well after this, just so you can kind of see the full layout of the park and how it all came together. It was quite impressive.
I just wanted to say, I was, I got to go and took my grandkids and stuff, and it was just, it was a great, great event, and the staff was all wonderful. Jivana was out there, there was, you know, everybody was out there helping, but I wanted to say to that, so that day I was there on a Saturday, and then I left there and went over to the north side of the township on Ford Boulevard, which is a little bit of a ways away, and I went in to pick up pizza for my grandkids and stuff at Pizza Perfect right there, and I see this guy in there, because there was this look of the rowers, they all kind of had this same, it's like this very physique, you know, muscular, big thighs, right, but anyway, so I see this young man and stuff, and he's real tall and stuff, and so I just, and I thought, he just didn't look like he was from that area, so I just said to him, I said, were you at the Row Fest? Plus he had this huge order, it was like two hundred and fifty dollars, like all this stuff, and I said, and he goes, yeah, and he was from Georgia, so that, he was over there buying food, told me he was staying in an Airbnb somewhere on that side of town. So anyways, yeah, so I thought that was really cool, and he said, I asked him, I says, what did you think? He goes, I absolutely, he says, I go rowing nationally all over, and he said he actually loved this venue and the communities, and people were, and he did say that, people were so nice.
Yeah, it was amazing, it was an amazing event, and I want to thank Destination Ann Arbor, too, for your coordination and assistance, like this was the first one, for them to come back a second year is unheard of. Being the cart driver, I hear conversations that people don't hear, and I came up to you and I said, two people told me they're coming back here next year. Oh, no, they're not coming back, they never come back twice, and sure enough, here they are, and it is, our staff did a great job, and we learned a lot from the first one. Lori, she works in community engagement, she was there every day with Robin, and I mean, there was just a core group of people that were amazing from our township team, and we had people that work here go and volunteer during the day in order to help, and it just, it took a team. We were rowing in the same direction, and it, we really did well, and thank you for bringing it here, and I look forward to next year, or this, yeah, next year. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Number six, oh, we have a public hearing, please, so sorry, let me get to my public hearing. Well, I got to call it. So we'd like to call the public hearing for the special assessment, Roe Resolution twenty twenty five, twenty seven, to order. Is there any public comments? In a minute. We got to ask for public. Are there any public comments? This is an annual special assessment district that we do for the streetlights and.
Brenda, we have a question.
Please go to the microphone.
Thank you, hi, Ted Weiser, six ten North Matt Miami, just, just walked in, so I didn't, didn't understand, I just wanted to understand more about what the public hearing is about, and I was looking at the packet and was, we were just, my, there were a bunch of neighborhoods that had codes by them, I wasn't sure where I fit in there, and I may have a comment based on what this is all about, so I'll just listen to how y'all introduce what's going on and go from there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is an annual assessment role that we're required to do, and it's for special assessment districts that are set up, street lighting predominantly is what it is on there, and you can look up your address and see.
Something about cameras?
Some, yeah, there are camera special assessment that were requested by neighborhoods that are on there, and there are streetlight special assessments that are on there as well.
I don't have anything to say.
I don't know where my neighborhood, whether my neighborhood is one of those codes or not, that was what I was asking. Just keep, keep listening, thanks for the information.
I'm sorry, sir, I could not hear what you said, if you could go to the microphone, I'm so sorry, I did not hear what you said.
I don't know what to ask. I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt again. I think they're doing something else.
So your, your question is?
What the heck is going on? And do I need to care? And if I care, then I might want to know more. I guess the one question is, when I looked at the packet, I didn't understand what the table was that had a number of neighborhoods with streetlights and a number of neighborhoods with security cameras and a code after each of the neighborhoods, that's it. And I just was asking, I couldn't figure out which neighbor, I should probably know which of those my six ten North Miami is, but I couldn't figure that out, and also, so if I'm covered by one of those, I wanted to first find that out, is that, that may be a strange question, and everyone may know the answer, I don't know that answer.
Well, the security cameras you would see, you know, in your neighborhood, you've been there a while, correct?
Oh, yeah.
So the special assessment, these special assessment districts have been created a while ago.
Oh, so the cameras are already there?
If, yeah, if there is a camera in your neighborhood, which I'm not sure of the naming of your subdivision, we can look it up and.
Lay Gardens, I think, but sometimes the lines move around.
Yeah.
It's near, between Cross and, and Forest along Harris.
Yeah, I used to live in that area, and they don't have security cameras, but I don't know if they have special, I don't think they have a lighting, do you have lighting on your street?
Yeah, we do on our street, over on Grand, there isn't, a couple of blocks over, but on ours, there's, so that would be to continue that, the two streetlights that we have on North Miami.
This is nothing new, these are. These are ones that were created a while ago.
Okay.
We have to reconfirm it every year.
So any, so pretty sure that Lay Garden, Lay Garden would show up on that list by name if, if I was covered.
If you look up your taxes, it would also show on your taxes if there's any special assessment district.
So can't, we can't connect my address with whether or not one of these is covered? Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. That's what the public comment is for. Good questions.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Are there any other public comments regarding the annual special assessment role? Hearing none will close the public hearing. Seven eleven. A motion to approve the.
Do I create a?
Motion Eldridge, support Row to approve the resolution. Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're gonna go back to the regular number six. Okay, thank you. Number six, to approve a price increase for park entry for Loon Feather Point, North Bay and North Hydro Parks and the boat launch fee at Ford Lake Park.
Good evening, John Hines again, Municipal Service Director. This is a request from the Recreation Department that was approved at the Park Commission meeting. It's a recommendation from the Park Commission for a increase in the daily entry fee between Memorial Day and Labor Day at Loon Feather Point Park, North Bay Park, North Hydro Park. And it would bring the fee from three dollars per vehicle to five dollars, which is the same as Ford Lake is. So the goal of that would be to have one uniform fee for all parks, make things a little more uniform for the gate staff when they're doing the transactions, as well as, you know, kind of also marry the increase in rates for staff that have raised since the last time this was raised. This would also be to increase the daily boat fee at Ford Lake Park from eight dollars to ten. And that just brings us a little bit closer to more in line with what other communities are. We're still cheaper, but, you know, brings us up a little bit more to, again, another even number, easier for the transactions when they have a line of folks trying to come into the parks. This does not affect any of the annual passes. It is still free for seniors. It is still ten dollars for residents. This only affects those. And when it comes to our staffing for Loon Feather, North Bay, North Hydro, you know, Ford Lake, during that Memorial Day to Labor Day, we staff just about every day as long as we have staffing. North Bay, we, you know, we're right behind that. And then Loon Feather and North Hydro are more so on the weekends when we have rentals. So again, this doesn't affect every single day during that time period, but just every day that we're able to have staffing.
We need a motion.
I have a question.
Yes, they have a motion.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Has, has an amount been estimated based on historical data? Say if you estimate so many cars coming in or so many people paying for the difference to estimate how much more revenue it will bring?
I don't have that number offhand. I apologize. You know, I know, again, when it comes to North Hydro and Loon Feather, it's really the Friday, Saturday and Sunday during that time period when we have rentals. So again, more so affects, you know, people coming in for the rentals instead of the daily park use. So over the course of the season, it will be an increase, but it's not going to be extremely substantial. I would say a couple thousand across the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Peterson.
Um, John, can you tell me why there was never adjustment to the parks like the other parks? Why was it cheaper to go to certain parks? I understand adjustment, why you needed, you wanted adjusted. It should be the same price, but why wasn't it never adjusted? Do you know?
It was before my time. My only justification would just be the fact that Ford Lake has so much more area and more activities than the other parks, but that would just be speculation because it was prior to my time.
Okay, good answer. Also, the other boat docks, like there's one in Belleville, would you know what the price of those are over there at the Goodend?
From what I was told is that we were far the cheapest and this ten dollar just brings us closer. And when people with boats come.
But you don't know how much it is in Belleville?
I do not.
The surrounding areas?
I was told that it's twelve and fifteen in the surrounding areas, but not given a list of what they were.
Oh, okay. In the surrounding areas, that's what I'm there, but you don't know specifically what areas, but you were told that. Okay. So you're right there at ten now?
Yes.
Asking for ten.
We're asking for ten, yeah, which is still cheaper. It just, again, brings us to a nice even number.
Thank you.
Is there a season pass for boats as well?
We do have one. It's twenty dollars.
Okay. So you can buy a season for twenty dollars. Do we have a motion in support on this? I didn't think so. I was trying.
That's why I was gonna.
Motion Row. Motion Row.
Support Peterson. That's why I was gonna interrupt you. We didn't never do a motion.
Peterson, okay.
Okay. Before discussion. It's okay.
Are there other questions from John regarding this request? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven is to waive the portion of the financial policy that requires posting the mitten and approve Oscar Larson for the fuel pump replacement for Ford Lake Park and Community Center in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and two cents, which is budgeted. Motion is in order.
So move Peterson.
Thank you. Support Thornton. Discussion?
I have one. So with those tanks, since we go back there sometime when they fill up stuff, those tanks, so they take the tanks out, where do they take those tanks? Because they've had gas in them before, blah, blah, blah. How do they dispose of them? And how long has those tanks been back there? It seems like they might have been there for a while.
Yes, happy to answer that. So this is something that has been in the budget the last few years. And at this point this year, with the stability in the motor pool department, we're actually able to make these upgrades. So the township has five gas tanks. They have unleaded diesel at Ford Lake Park, an unleaded diesel at our golf maintenance garage, and an unleaded tank at the community center. They get used every day by staff. Of course, the golf maintenance, not quite as much in the wintertime, but they've not been upgraded in many years. So as part of what we had in this budget was for the fuel tank replacements across the township. So I worked with Atlas Fuels, who's our primary fuel provider, and they led us to a few of their preferred vendors to make these upgrades. So this is the, I'll say, the second to last step for, I would say, the complete renovation of all five of those tanks that we've done over the last, I'd say, six weeks. So what we've done so far with Atlas Fuel is we did a testing of all five tanks of the fuel, I would say contaminants, to see what kind of shape they're in. So Ford Lake was the only ones that gave cause for concern and that'll actually lead to my, why we're asking for Oscar Larson to do this. So we replaced the fuel and took out the contaminants in Ford Lake Park. We have cleaned, repainted and restickered the tank at the community center and the two at Ford Lake. And then we are currently going through the process to replace the two tanks at Green Oaks Maintenance Garage, including getting a smaller tank. So I put a purchase order in today for the removal of those two tanks. And because, again, we are a partner with Atlas Fuel, they are going to give us two five-hundred gallons to now utilize instead, which are brand new with brand new pumps. So the reason why I'm bringing this request from Oscar Larson Company, who is the only company who's worked on the township's fuel pumps for as long as the history that I can find and the only vendor within this area, is because we have had over the last few years a consistent problem with air getting in the tanks at Ford Lake Park and the community center. This is one that our Parks and Ground staff, special mechanic has said that those pumps are bad. We can't fix them in-house and we've had Oscar Larson fix them. They would get air bubbles in there, which would then take the tanks out of commission for weeks, cost us thousands of dollars at a time to fix. So this right here is the replacement of the two damaged fuel pumps. With this, the pumps get moved from where they are kind of aside of the tank to on top of the tank. So that should prevent any of those air bubble issues from happening in the future. So with that and with the removal of the tanks at Green Oaks Golf Course, I could officially say that we have, in a way, upgraded and given a stable future to all five tanks in the township.
To be safe. To be safe.
To be safe, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions are coming? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is to approve the change order number two with KAB Enterprise for the additional pavement repairs of Apple Ridge Park in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is budgeted and to be reimbursed through the Washoe County Development Block Grant. Motion Eldridge, support Thornton. Questions or comments?
Okay.
And when will that be completed?
This, if it's approved tonight, this will be completed in the next two weeks. Right now, so KAB was approved by the board for the Apple Ridge CDBG project for the replacement of the playground and the paving of the walkway around the park. They've been working since the beginning of August. And actually, yesterday, the playground equipment was delivered and the company is to pave this week. So I could say potentially it'll be done next week, but I'll say two weeks to be safe. So this change order, change order one was one that was signed right after Spicer Group and KAB sat down after the board approved and the contract was signed, when they looked at the submittals that KAB was providing compared to what was specked out and got some actual numbers. That was a deduct of three thousand, six hundred, twenty-six dollars and nineteen cents. So change order two is an increase of twenty-three thousand, yeah, just twenty-four thousand. So it's ultimately an addition of nineteen thousand. And what this will do, will pave around the playground that is being replaced. The playground that's being replaced is going to have a concrete edge, much like the Burns Park and West Willow Playgrounds that KAB did for the township last year. So this will replace the asphalt around the playground itself that will match and marry very nicely with the concrete edge as well. So it'll be no trip hazards. It'll take away some of the deficiencies because though it was paved around the playground, I'm not sure what year that was and of course, was showing some signs of wear. The reason why it was not included in the original project specs is technically it was not part of the pathway in the original layout and there was also the budget that we had to consider. This change order brought before you was approved by the county to bring forward to the board, so they will be reimbursing this as part of the grant.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under authorization and bids, we have to accept the bid from varsity Ford Ann Arbor and approve the purchase of one new Ford Explorer for thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is budgeted.
So move Peterson.
Motion Row, support Peterson. Are questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no other business? Is there any public comments at this time?
First, I'd like to say I'm thankful for being here because at the end of August, I was passed you in the car where it was broadsided T-bone on my side. The lady ran the stop sign at fifty-plus miles an hour. When my friend got out and asked her, did she see the stop sign? The woman responded, what stop sign? So that's how that went. Still got a bruise on my hip, got a concussion, had a laceration on my, under my right eye, all that good stuff. What I would like to say is about U of M, I just recently, I should say, applied to speak at one of their meetings and today I got the email that they were unable to schedule me for the meeting. U of M is unfriendly, they're not for free speech, and you have to, to speak at their meetings, again, you have to give a description of what you want to talk about in five hundred words or less, so they can nitpick if they even want to hear you. So if any of you have any suggestions how a person can stand up against that, because you guys are hitting the same wall. And I'm going to tell you this, and I'm not a Democrat or Republican, I don't know if you noticed or not, because one day I woke up and I looked to the right and looked to the left and they both took off. So they left me in the middle, you can say. And on all the board of U of M, it's all Democrats. And I've heard some people say vote blue no matter who. That has to stop. Just because you're a Democrat, you don't have to vote for a Democrat. At this point, the only thing, and from what I heard from somebody who worked in the office of the president and the board up there recently, they're all handpicked puppets from the Democratic Party, placed in that position. And that's not good for the benefit of the community if a party is picking these people to be basically voted in. They're here to serve us, the people. We vote for these people. I'm just asking, not vote for the, another Democratic, U of M region, because obviously they're handpicked, they're doing no communities no good, and they don't care about who or what they do. They only have a handful of meetings a year and you can't even get in to speak to them. And it's, that's why I thought, hey, I could run for one and I just talked to this person, I'd run as independent. She said, you lose. That's when she told me they're handpicked puppets, because nobody, nobody wants to vote for an independent. They want to stick to the parties. I'm not that kind. I will vote for the best person for the best position. But just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll add that to the list of shame when they won't let a resident speak at a U of M border region, border region meeting. So are there any other public comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Ipsy Township resident, homeowner here. I live less than a mile from the proposed site for this facility. And I just want to, first and foremost, thank you all so much for all the hard work you're doing to advocate for our community and keep our community safe and devoid of this facility. It's really inspiring and assuring to me to know that you all are fighting so hard and doing everything you can to stop this. I am also a staff member at U of M, so it's been quite an anxiety-inducing few months for me. I also requested to speak at this meeting and as both a resident and a staff member, I was also notified today that I was not permitted to speak. So even from within the university, I am running into walls. I also went to the open house that was held last week and was just appalled at the lack of information and transparency. You know, I talked to faculty members there who work in the same college that I work in and they were told they weren't allowed to share their last names with me. And I'm like, we work together. I am your colleague. So I really am glad to hear that you are working to leverage state support because I think that is our way to do this thing. U of M clearly has shown that they don't care. What we think here in Ipsy Township, and I'm hopeful that with the support of other stakeholders who have power in this situation, we can all work together to keep our community safe and free from the potential harms that this facility would cause. So thank you so much for your continued hard work and I really appreciate all of your efforts to stop this thing. Thank you. Oh, and my name is Gabby Strakowski. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry that happened, so now it's two residents. That's, are there any other public comments? No? There's, are there any board member updates?
It's Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize to the attorney and the board. I have a new phone and they tell me you have to turn off two buttons at the same time. I thought I turned it off, but when I was helping John, I almost jumped over here and tried to get that phone. I thought we both would fall and be embarrassed. So my phone never goes off, people. But let me just say, Madam Chair, myself went to Whitehead Memorial Church Festival this week. me just say, Madam Chair, myself went to Whitehead Memorial Church Festival this week. A great turnout for the community. We stayed a little long and they've been up there and talked to us, really thanked us. And they wanted us to tell the board, they are so appreciative that we did that for them. And also, they did not block the street.
Yes.
Everything was on the ground. I don't know why they didn't, but I don't know if it went through the county or whatever. But it was fine, just like it was. And they really was happy with this board and they really appreciate all that you've done for them. And it was a really nice success. Thank you.
All right. If there aren't any other board member comments? Motion to adjourn is in order?
Support.
Motion Peterson, support Thornton. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:31.